Good evening, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for February 28th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here. Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the February 14th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Remove approval for the February 14th, 2022 minutes.
Moved by Jay, a seconded by Shandra. Are there any substantial corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans, is he here yet? Ms. Hershey? Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
At motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe we have any. Uh, next item are presentations and public input. We do have an invited presentation tonight, so we're going to do the presentations first and that'll be followed by public input. And actually, there are two presentations. Both of them are related to ARPA funding and this is part of our ongoing progress in the ARPA allocation. Uh, Barima, could you put the first PowerPoint up, please? And Mary Alice, could you take the chair?
Sure, I'm having David here.
Thank you.
All right, who's going to be presenting on this, Diane? Are you going to be first presenter?
Yes, I'm the first presenter and that'll be followed by the Urbana Park District. Thanks.
Right.
So as I said, this is a continuing uh presentation in our discussion of the American Rescue Plan Act and the use of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And tonight I wanted to focus on the um proposed uses by the city of Urbana. And then that will be followed in a short time with the discussion of the um uh development of the concept plan and addressing uh the rest of the priorities. So I want to take you through a 30,000 view, what view tonight. This is um information only, no um action will be taken on tonight on this um proposed uses. But it is a context for the ongoing discussion. Next slide, please. Just to remind folks, um ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funding is non-recurring, one-time funding. Urbana expects to receive $12.97 million. We've received the first half of that last year and can apply for the second half in May. Final rules for use of the funds and guidelines and reporting requirements and that sort of thing were released by the US Treasury in January of this year. Funds have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. That means we have to have purchase orders or agreements, contracts, commitments in place by then. And all funds have to be spent by December 31st, 2026. The city council uh last fall approved a contract with the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission to provide project and fiscal management services. They've been, they've given you presentations. They're currently finishing up the uh public engagement plan and you'll be getting an update on that next week. And that will begin shortly. And one of the big changes that we uh discussed at the meeting in January is that cities can take a standard allowance. That was one of the changes between the interim and final rules. Cities can take a standard allowance of up to $10 million uh for services or infrastructure needs through 2026. Next slide, please. So I'll give you a summary that these are the three major buckets that I'm proposing. Cities share or cities proposed uses for these funds would fall into and then I'll go into a little bit of detail on each of these uses. The first, as you know, we have a contract for approximately $417,000 with the Regional Planning Commission to cover the entire year of, or the entire period that we are managing these funds. So basically it started in late 2021 and it'll go through early 2027. Um, I added um about $80,000 more to this to, to anticipate any um unexpected expenses that come up related to the management or grants processing. Um, services and infrastructure, I believe this would fall under our standard allowance. We're still determining, clarifying exactly how that would be categorized. But there are, um, that's the second large category and that would be for maintaining ongoing services in the city of Urbana. And then tonight you'll hear a description of the Park District Health and Wellness Center and I'm proposing another $2.5 million contribution for that project. So the subtotal on this part of the funding would be about $6.5 million, which is about 50% of the total that is coming to the city. Next slide. Okay, a little bit more detail on each of these buckets. As far as ARPA administration, as I mentioned, um, we have a contract signed with the RPC. And then um some additional funding for miscellaneous expenses that come up over the next six years. And if, if they're not needed, if this extra funds are not needed, then it can be repurposed for other uses later. Next slide. Under the services and infrastructure, I'm proposing um a total of thirty, three and a half million dollars. I would like to allocate $1 million for the multipurpose spaces in the two new fire stations that we'll be building. This will give us additional flexibility as we design these buildings and um equip the spaces to meet not only uh internal city needs, but also community needs as well. So this just gives us some extra flexibility as we um plan for these new fire stations. One is going to be built on North Lincoln Avenue and the other one is planned for South Fylo Road. For general services and infrastructure, I'm proposing $2.5 million. Um, this helps us ensure that we can maintain services in the face of the revenue loss that we are seeing due to our census decrease. If you remember, the census uh was taken at the exact same time the university shut down and um in 2020, April of 2020. As a result, our official census count went from 41,250 to 38,336, about a 7% decrease. This has a direct financial impact on our annual revenue, which pays for our recurring expenses. A lot of our revenue hat is based on our population. Our share of the state income tax is one of the biggest. Um, and you heard a, in our financial forecast um previously that we expect to see at least a $500,000 decrease in the general fund alone due to the reduction in our census count. That doesn't include the um funds lost from the, our share of the state motor fuel tax, which is based on population. And then some of our federal grants from HUD, for example, that are also based on population. So this $2.5 million will um help bridge the gap, maintain our services until we can evaluate um whether or not we will actually do a special census, whether the benefits outweigh the cost. And it certainly covers a couple, a few years um of that gap. Uh, next slide, please. And then the third major bucket is um the Urbana Park District's Health and Wellness Center. This uh to me represents um an absolutely transformative project and an opportunity to expedite construction of this project. Because I believe it's a tremendous, will be a tremendous benefit to the community and is very much needed. It aligns with a number of the draft city goals that we've been working on. It certainly reflects the um priorities that you also um articulated at the January meeting. And meets and conforms with the many of the best practices that we were um uh also given from our various as, as guidelines for use of the ARPA money. And it also aligns very well with the campus community compact to accelerate social justice. Um, this is a group uh that's been uh meeting for almost a year now between the University of Illinois campus and many community members. And it, it aligns very well with that as well. Uh, the folks from the Park District will be giving you many more details in just a minute, but just some of the boxes that are ticked and the reason that I've, I really believe this is a tremendously um valuable investment for us both to make is that it can contribute to public safety, health and wellbeing. It is um permanent public infrastructure. It's an excellent use of one-time funds. It not only provides jobs during construction, but also job opportunities at the center and also can be used for job training. It prioritizes an underserved neighborhood, an underserved community just by its location and it fills a number of un, unfilled needs. Um, several years ago, we were trying to convince the YMCA to locate a satellite facility or another facility in Urbana in very close to this neighborhood and um those efforts didn't work out. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy that the Park District is stepping up to do this. It um leverages our ARPA funds through collaboration with another taxing body. And that again, that's one of the best practices. It allows us to, to make these dollars go farther, can be utilized in programming for community violence prevention. It provides a space for youth and family. And um the, the development of the facility is based on extensive public engagement um conducted by the Park District. So I've invited them here tonight to, to provide more information on uh on this facility. Next slide, please. And then again, um, the, the $6.5 million that I've just described is about half of what we expect to get. Still to be determined are the unidentified are the priorities which we will um hone in on during our public engagement process with the start in the next couple of weeks. And discussions at council and development of the concept plan and then um decisions on allocating the remainder six, roughly $6.5 million. So we have a lot of work ahead of us and this is just the beginning. And at this point, I will um turn this over to the Urbana Park District and I'll let the representatives uh with the Park District introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin. Thank you, City Council. Um, I'm Tim Bartlett. I'm the Executive Director, the Urbana Park District. We have other staff here that will introduce themselves now.
Uh, good evening. I'm Derek Liebert. I'm the Superintendent of Planning and Operations for the Urbana Park District.
Good evening. I'm Corky Emerson. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm, I'm the Superintendent of Recreation.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Kelsey Beckewell. I'm the Development Manager.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, Mayor, for that wonderful introduction and setup for our presentation. Couple of quick thanks before we get started. Just want to thank the entire Urbana Park District team, everyone in Urbana, our donors and everyone that helped us get to this point tonight. Also, I want to say special thanks to the City Council for taking all the time that you did in putting together terrific priorities. We really appreciated that. It was very helpful in putting this presentation together. I don't believe we could have uh been on mark without that information. So again, thank you. As you know, the city and the Park District have a long history of collaboration to benefit the Urbana community. Uh, everything from community and economic development, public safety, community programs and events, tree preservation, trail development and everything else in between. In many ways, our process in creating uh health and wellness opportunities for the Urbana Park District through programs, parks and facilities has been similar to the city's approach in establishing priorities for these funds. Public input was a huge part of our process and the focus on health and wellness and the need for a dedicated facility to address individual health and wellness needs was something that we'd heard directly from the public over and over again. Same as the input that you've had um from the public in determining your final focus areas and your comprehensive planning. Our project and your focus areas both respond to specific needs and concerns voiced by our community. Next slide. Want to talk a little about our strategic planning. Um, back in 2018, we engaged in a very extensive strategic planning process to determine the priorities for the Park District through 2024. The goal was to be responsive to the public and include them in the planning process. We did that through a variety of ways, including surveys, focus groups, interviews, whiteboard exercises at community events and the graphic illustration you see above, which we did with the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee. We wanted a variety of avenues for reaching and hearing from our community. From the community input process, four main areas emerged: reaching underrepresented groups, creating engaging park services, offering varied opportunities for health and wellness, and expanding trail connections. These then uh became our four pillars of our new strategic plan to include "You Belong Here," "Health and Wellness," "Place Making" and "Trails and Connectivity." The health and wellness facility and the park improvement project um that we're talking about tonight is a perfect uh synergy of all those four pillars. In addition to responding to the needs communicated to the Urbana Park District, it also responds to many of the needs citizens have identified in regards to the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Up next, we have a brief video that we hope captures kind of the look and the feel of this new facility and uh we'll take a look at it next.
Can everybody see that on the screen? Just to clarify. Okay, great.
The Urbana Park District has long recognized the need for a comprehensive health and wellness facility in Urbana. Urbana, as well as the broader region, are greatly impacted by rising obesity rates, cardiovascular disease, diabetes and cancer. The demand for an affordable and accessible community health and wellness facility is needed now more than ever. Urbana needs a facility that will offer extended hours and accessible programs year round, as well as a space to grow as the community continues to grow. The Urbana Park District believes that "You belong here" and that mantra is carried into the development of a welcoming and comprehensive health and wellness facility. The Park District realizes that the demand of its users for an indoor space dedicated to health and wellness currently outweighs what its existing facilities can offer. For instance, Brookins Gym is one of the most visited Park District facilities in Urbana with more than 100,000 visits per year. And those visits are just for registered programming. In order to build a successful and sustainable facility, the Park District engaged with key stakeholders from across the region. These stakeholders provided input into what is needed for a community-focused facility. The goal of the Urbana Park District's Health and Wellness Facility is to offer a welcoming and motivating environment that safely engages and benefits everyone in our community and beyond in their journey to better health and wellness.
I'm excited for the Health and Wellness Facility because we have nothing like that here in Urbana. Um, it's really exciting because it's for the children. The kids and the families will have a place that's easily accessible and they can get out, get active and be able to use the equipment. Um, it's really exciting because we will have access to all of the green space. We get to keep some of the tree line. It's gonna be really a beautiful use of this area.
There were multiple sites assessed and reviewed as potential locations for a health and wellness facility. The main focus in securing a location was to find one that is easily accessible to Urbana and the surrounding region. This means a location that is drivable, bikable, walkable and directly located on a public transit route. Additionally, the Park District prioritized the selection of property that may be eligible for future grant funding opportunities, as well as the expansion of amenities and outdoor recreation. Ultimately, after a community-focused site selection process, Urbana's Prairie Park rose to the top as the best possible location for a facility. Prairie Park offers easy access to Washington Street and other main thoroughfares, connectivity to other Park District trails and amenities, and proximity to the Urbana School District's Prairie Campus. The Urbana Park District has been planning and prepping for this overdue and much-needed facility for some time. The site design for the Health and Wellness Facility is intended to harmoniously blend into the unique setting of Prairie Park. The building and parking setback is intended to generally match those of the Prairie Campus immediately east of the site, creating a consistent open space buffer along Washington Street. The site development will include the preservation of existing hardwood trees along Washington Street and in the future, a nature-themed splash pad and playground, half-court basketball courts and a multi-use trailway to better connect surrounding neighborhoods to the new facility. When built out, the facility is intended to look as though it has always belonged in this park. Amenities included in the Health and Wellness Facility don't stop at the door. Based on feedback from the community and research of other facilities from across the Midwest, the Urbana Park District has developed a site plan to include a variety of features that promote the health and wellness of the entire community. Features include a safe and welcoming entrance leading to brightly lit full-court basketball courts, multi-use spaces for workshops and educational activities, a child-centered indoor play area, multiple studios featuring state-of-the-art fitness equipment and an indoor track. The facility will also feature administrative office space and storage to support ongoing programming and facility coordination.
I think many families in our community will benefit greatly from having access to a facility like this. Whether it's an opportunity for their kids to get out of the house, uh make friends in the neighborhood, whether it's an opportunity for grandma to go out and exercise, uh or maybe meet some new people through classes. Uh, I think that the ways that this is going to benefit our community, we can't even see all of it yet.
At the Urbana Park District, we know that great parks build great communities. In turn, we are looking to our community for bold leadership to help build this comprehensive and inclusive facility. The Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners has embarked on a transformational fundraising campaign to make this facility a reality. We invite you to join us as we create a unifying space that will serve our community for many years to come.
Great. We want to talk with you all about how this project and this facility align with the number of the city's goals for ARPA funds. On the first goal, a stable infrastructure, uh you can think of this in two ways. Uh, the first is in terms of it being a long-term community asset. Uh, the Park District has been around for over 100 years. Uh, we've partnered with the city on a number of projects and certainly this would be an investment that would be there for the long term. Uh, we, we want to share with you this, this site concept plan to give you an idea of how some other elements uh address sustainability and infrastructure. Uh, you see the 45,000 square foot facility there on the uh east half of Prairie Park. Uh, we also have a parking lot proposed that would have bio swales and rain gardens that would ultimately treat the water before releasing it to a naturalized attention basin. Uh, we have a nature-themed splash pad. This would be different than a lot of other splash pads you might be familiar with. Uh, typical splash pads, most of them perhaps, uh would do what's called drain to waste. Uh, we would take a different approach. We would treat our water and recycle and reuse it. Uh, we also are proposing a number of multi-use trails that would connect with Weaver, Weaver Park, the Northeast and ultimately to, to, to uh the Kickapoo Rail Trail. Uh, we have uh the, a number of pavilions, a basketball uh area, a number of, of stable infrastructure that we're proposing in the site plan. Uh, next slide, please. We also have solar proposed. Uh, we're looking at doing a solar ray on this facility, enhanced insulation. Uh, we would want to make sure that we have a very uh tight thermal envelope. Uh, we have water-efficient plumbing, also high, high-efficiency lighting. We'd have a cistern to recapture water and reuse it, uh and watering our trees and our landscaping. That would have about a 5,000 gallon capacity. Also a number of habitat-friendly features. Uh, we're proposing using bird-friendly glass. This is glass that the birds can see. They don't strike into. Uh, it's a growing concern. Uh, we've been working with the University of Illinois on a number of their projects and learning from what they're doing uh to limit uh the impact of, of, of glass and facilities like this on, on, on birds. Uh, like all of our projects, we did invest heavily in native landscaping, pollinator habitat. And also we want to preserve our existing trees, work closely with our contractor and make sure we preserve our trees.
The second goal that we've noticed from your ARPA funds is the public health and safety, community violence prevention. The Urbana Park District, we too have been concerned with the ongoing issue of community violence and are committed to being a part of the solution. Safe community, community gathering spaces are needed now more than ever. And the Health and Wellness Facility will be a safe community space with extended hours of opportu, operation and opportunities for on-your-own-time recreation. A good example of this is at Brookins, um our, our main, our mainly, our highest-used um facility at the Park District of over 100,000 visits. It's only used for program space. So this facility will be open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM and you can come in anytime you want to recreate, to socialize, um thinking of the teenagers coming, going to school and saying, hey, let's meet at the center tonight. And they go in after dinner and they go and meet. So a big difference from the opportunities we're able to provide at this time. Um, we're also committed to using this facility to create opportunities for youth through activities and employment. Um, the Health and Wellness Facility is an integral component of being able to expand and deepen our existing partnerships in the community that are working to address these issues. We don't have a Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club in Urbana, but we have some great partners. We have the HBNT, the HB Neighborhood Transformation Group. We are actually in, in great discussions with them at this point where we're going to do a Juneteenth event at Crestview Park and then do the next 10 Saturdays at various parks um throughout Urbana, um working with Maurice. So this facility will allow us to expand on all these opportunities that I'm getting ready to talk about. Leirun Neighborhood Action Committee, um we've, we've been a part of the Gardens Group as well. I know the city's been a major part in that from the uh creation of those gardens. Um, we have uh been taking Urbana out. Hopefully everybody here has heard of Urbana. Um, it's one of our newest outreach and wellness tools. It's been serving the community well. Um, COVID's kind of prevented to exactly what we wanted, but it's been reaching individuals. Uh, Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center, um we've, we've done a lot with um them over, over the last 20 years. I've worked with them there, but uh as we move forward, right now we've got an Urbana Day at Brookins where um they're doing programming for, for the youth at the Neighborhood Connections Center. They come over to Brookins, but again, a facility of this nature with two gyms just expands those opportunities where we could have um some Leirun kids there at one, at one gym and we can have Urbana Neighborhood Connections on the other gym. Um, another, another group that we've been working with is the Community Outreach and Support Team. So this is COSH. This is our, basically it's our champions. So as we developed our outreach and wellness and created a department about five years ago, um our goal was to form this uh Neighborhood Champions Group. And this group um has um representatives from all the three areas that I just told you, Neighborhood Transformation, the Leirun Neighborhood Group, um Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center, but it has also um the Director of Um Uniting Pride. Um, so we're just trying to build this huge support team to coordinate what we do, how we do it, how we can do it better. And um again, a facility of this nature just helps us engage more youth, more individuals and provide, um steer them towards healthy activities. Uh, a next goal was public health and safety, COVID-19 pandemic response and recovery. COVID-19 response and recovery is also an important piece of improving the overall health and wellness of Urbana and Parks and Recreation are a vital part of that public health infrastructure. Park space is essential to our health and wellbeing as a society and it has never been more clear in the context of COVID-19. I'm sure all of you are well aware over the last two years, how many people you've seen in the parks when they couldn't go anywhere else, right? Um, so Parks and Recreation has a place as an important piece of public health planning, especially in historically underserved communities that face barriers in accessing private recreation opportunities. With our new facility, we can provide extra space for schools should they need to return to e-learning. In 2020, uh we had set up a plan with the Urbana School District to use our facilities if needed um to be able to spread out the youth for e-learning opportunities. Ended up that plan did not have to come together, but if, if it should, um we, this is another uh space that we could, we could do that in the future. We'll have space for vaccine drives and again, in 2020, we uh teamed up with We'll have space for vaccine drives, and again, in 2020, we teamed up with the Jetty Roads Committee, and we did a vaccine drive at King School. I should say the Urbana School District obviously was involved in that as well, and we provided 300 vaccines, not once, but twice. So the first shot, and then I think it was actually four weeks later, we did another one, and this was roughly, I would say, there was people outside of the King Park neighborhood that attended, but in large part, it was those individuals from the King Park neighborhood. So that was an awesome opportunity, and a facility like this obviously allows us to do more of those opportunities in the future. It also provides a socially-distanced recreational opportunity, so you know, as we hopefully continue to move in the positive towards COVID, we still have individuals who want lots more space than maybe some others. So trying to make sure that everybody is able to recreate in a comfortable, safe environment. We'll be creating a place where people can feel a sense of community and togetherness that has been missing these past two years. Restoring a sense of unity is going to be so important to restoring our community Next is Public Health and Safety, Encouraging Health and Wellness. Of course, as the name indicates, the main purpose of Health and Wellness Facility is to encourage individual health and wellness. As each person improves their own circumstance, our community health and wellness follows. We have begun centering our program around the eight dimensions of wellness. One, intellectual wellness. Two, emotional wellness. Three, spiritual wellness. Four, environmental wellness. Five, financial wellness. Six, occupational wellness. And seven, social wellness. And not least, but not last but least, or least but last, is physical wellness. These are all things that we've been working on for several years, but again, a facility of this nature will help us expand on those opportunities. In areas we don't provide programming ourselves, we are working with outside groups to facilitate those offerings. So for example, in some of these wellness wheels opportunities, we'll be working with public health for dietitian classes. We have a community space room in this facility where you could do dietitian, have a dietitian come in and do healthy eating. We've had financial advisors come in and meet with people. We could work with the Mental Health Board and have mental health offerings. So just an example of some of the things, we are doing some of them, but we can expand them even further with a facility of this nature. Our facility is designed to be welcoming and invite, encourage people to pursue health and wellness goals. That's why we will offer a variety of well-based programming, and why we are committed to extended hours of operation and on-your-own-time recreational activities. Human Rights and Social Services Equity. One of the core pillars of the Urbana Park District, as you belong here, before it was a pillar, it became a philosophy at the park district, and this all began in our outreach and wellness endeavor about five years ago, and in my opinion, it's the best thing the Urbana Park District has ever done. But this facility itself meets our goal of creating spaces where everyone belongs and also enhances the City of Urbana's goal in creating equity in the community. With this project, we are invested in an underserved area that is a high-hope community, a community that would most benefit from having this type of community resource nearby. As we did our underrepresented study with the Diversity and Reach Search Lab, a few of the barriers, one, transportation. Well, transportation's an issue for many people in the neighborhood, and we are created to creating, we are committed to creating greater accessibility to people in the neighborhood through creating greater accessibility through creating better bike, pedestrian access from Maine to Washington, and to the businesses and community spaces nearby. Another barrier was affordability. Affordability is also very important to us. Memberships will be low-cost and eligible for scholarships, and there will be low-cost daily access options. The outdoor site amenities will be free, and there'll be free public Wi-Fi, which goes back to the call-to-action plan that Mayor Marlin was talking about. Wi-Fi was a big issue in that report and study. Next up is Human Rights and Social Services, Expanding Opportunity. Another important goal we have in relationship to this facility and park development is to expand our opportunity through the community. One of our main priorities in youth engagement through a variety of methods, including after-school programming and programs such as midnight basketball. Mayor Marlin and I know Tim have had a lot of discussions on this. Reverend Comer and Tim and I have had several discussions on this for about eight years, and we are finally to the point where we are going to get this started in about two weeks, actually, which is a great thing. But this is one thing, again, that we'll be moving into our new facility. And then offering employment opportunities, lots of opportunities, obviously, from employment, from constructing the facility, but lots of ongoing employment opportunities for youth and adults in the future. We offer a lot of these things right now, obviously, but again, this facility is large enough in scale that we will need lots of individuals to work for us in the future as we oversee this facility. In addition to youth engagement, we are committed to providing age-friendly opportunities such as rules to the road, tech help, and the first-time-ever instituting a Silver Sneakers Program. Not sure how aware you all are with the Silver Sneaker Program, but Silver Sneaker Program, in order to qualify as an agency, you must have five pieces of exercise equipment. Until this facility is built, we've never had that opportunity. The Silver Sneakers Program allows individuals 55 and older to get reimbursed from their insurance company for their exercise. So in short, that's the easiest way to explain it. Outreach to the underserved is a critical component of what we hope to do with this project. The facility itself is located in an area that has been underserved, in which we have made strides towards serving better through a lot of our outreach and wellness opportunities. We are excited to have this opportunity to invest in a permanent presence in the community and to remove barriers to participation in Urbana Park District programs. As I mentioned earlier, scholarships will be available for memberships, and of course, the improved park area will be free to anyone to access. We also envision the facility as a place that is culturally relevant and celebrates the diversity of Urbana. One last item I have to mention is when I talk about culturally relevant, we are working on two different forms of art displays that will be a part of this facility to help promote that welcoming atmosphere. So thank you for your time, and I'll pass it on.
Great. The next goal we want to address is...
I apologize, just one moment, please. So this is Mary Alice. Do you know roughly how much longer, because we've gone over our traditional 10 minutes of a presentation, and we need to have a vote in terms of how much to extend? So do you know approximately how much longer you would like?
Probably about five minutes.
All right. Can I have a motion to extend the time for five more minutes?
I'll make that motion.
All right, moved by Jaya.
A second.
May I have a second? Second by James. Will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you very much for letting us do that part, so you have five more minutes.
Thank you. The next and final goal we want to talk about is the Economic Recovery and Development Goal. Obviously, the construction will create new jobs, but one aspect we're particularly focused on is the opportunity to create jobs for minority and women-owned businesses. We'll be working with the State of Illinois Capital Development Board to establish goals for representation by minority and women-owned businesses, then developing a plan that we'll review with them, and then moderate throughout the construction. This is really an extension of work we've been doing already. We've developed a preferred provider program, which is a program where we hire contractors for work that's less than $25,000, essentially no bid contracts, that we award based upon qualifications, and we've added a new lens for minority and women-owned businesses. We're in the process right now of recruiting businesses from both the City of Champaign's CEDAP list and the City of Urbana, I'm sorry, the State of Illinois's list, and are eager to work with the City of Urbana more as they develop their own CEDAP program. Additionally, this facility will be a physical infrastructure that will employ a number of full-time and part-time park district employees, but more importantly, it could be a resource for job seekers. As we toured a number of facilities, we saw places where the gyms could be places where queer fairs are hosted. We're looking forward to doing the same. As a destination park and recreation facility, it will be a draw, and we know that healthy neighborhoods encourage new growth, and so we think this will be a real stimulus for the neighborhood. Next slide.
All right. Now that we've kind of gone over the park and the facility itself, I just wanted to get a little bit into the costs and funding. So the estimated budget for both the indoor and outdoor facility construction is about $14.5 million, with $11.8 million of that related to the construction of this physical facility itself. Our cost estimates, our preliminary estimates for those exterior facility development features, those are about $2.7 million, bringing us, and then you can see all the other related costs, contingency, professional services, furniture fixtures and equipment, bringing us up to that $14.5 million number. And both the indoor and outdoor site development features really are vital for increasing the overall health of the Urbana community. So we'll get into a little bit of the funding picture as well. So the Urbana Park District, we've dedicated $4.1 million to this project, $3.1 million from refinancing some bonds, and then $1 million from our reserve fund balance. We've also been awarded an IDNR Park and Recreational Facilities Construction Grant for $2.5 million. We've got $1.75 million in privately raised donations so far from the community, which is just a really striking number, and I think speaks to the real need and desire for this type of facility and development in Urbana. So that brings our total secured funding up to $8.35 million. We do have an additional state grant that's still pending. We've been notified of award, but have not been able to execute a grant agreement yet. We're in that process right now, but that's for another $3 million. And then, of course, you know, the $2.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds that we're talking about today. So with the outstanding pending state grant, and if we are selected as a recipient of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, that'll bring us up to $13.85 million in funding for this project, which would really, really accelerate the process of being able to develop the whole site interior and exterior facility and bring it to be able to serve the community.
Lastly, I wanted to just touch on the timeline for the project. As you can see by the diagram on the screen, ideally, we'd like to finalize all the funding sources by May of this year, 2022. We're planning for a summer site dedication and construction to follow with completion of the project in October 2023. Lastly, I just wanted to say thank you all to council. Thank you for the extended time that you allowed us to make this presentation. Really appreciate that, and we do believe that our project priority goals do align with your ARPA priorities, and this would be a really great facility for Urbana. Thank you, and we can answer any questions as your time allows.
All right. So Grace, get to the floor.
Thank you. I have, this is a question for the first presentation, although relates to both, and for the mayor more specifically, is how this process relates to the RPC process, and like, is there a council approval for the city's amount? Is there a public input process? So kind of what that process looks like, and why not go through the RPC process specifically for the Health and Wellness Center and the fire multipurpose rooms?
Well, as I explained at the beginning, this, my presentation was the 30,000-foot view, and as we talked about in January, there's the internal city needs, which were given tonight as far as in general, and then we'll have the continuing public engagement. Every project ultimately will be approved or will come to city council for approval. So this is not, this is not, this is a preliminary proposal, but we wanted to introduce this project as a, just I think, an excellent use of the funds and as part of the city's proposal. So, and next week, the RPC website community survey will go live, and that's when we start to hone in on community priorities as well. And then the concept plan will be developed from the priorities that you determine come out of the public input that you've received and your own priorities.
Yeah, a more general question, Diane. Now, my understanding is that on June 7th of last year, we got the first installment of the ARPA money at, you know, a little over $6 million, and that's in the bank already, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so last year, you mentioned that the second installment may be in jeopardy because Congress was changing its mind about giving the municipalities a second installment. Do you have any update about that information?
That was one of the things we were hearing last year, but we haven't heard anything for months and months, so I don't think that's in jeopardy at this point. We do expect to apply for the second installment, and I believe it will be available sometime in May.
Thank you.
Things, you know, with this money, things changed constantly, and besides, we saw the rules change from the interim rules to the final rules, and that was one of the, that was one of the rumors, well, not rumors, I mean, it was actually a possibility last year, but no, we expect to get both installments.
All right, other questions for the mayor or for the park district? Jaya?
Oh, yeah, I think, just some clarification on, so thank you all, first of all, for all the information. I mean, I don't think anyone would argue against the idea of the Health and Wellness Center. I think it's an incredible opportunity, but just trying to figure out where this fits into some of these other conversations with ARPA, because this is a complete deviation from everything else we've done so far. So I think that clarification would be helpful of what is it that, is this just informational as we go forward? This is another thing to consider. We've had conversations about the fact that there are very pressing pandemic-related needs, like the increase in gun violence, where our nonprofits are really hurting, but we haven't done anything to try to make a more urgent move on that. So I'm a little uncertain of what is, what is the intent with this particular presentation or combination of presentations from this city staff perspective?
Oh, go ahead, Diane.
This is informational, and as we've, as you know, the fiscal recovery funds are partly, are originally designed, and they still are, to make sure that cities themselves can respond and to community needs and recover. So what I presented earlier were three major areas for, that we would propose for use for cities, the city itself, and then that would be combined with the needs that you identify in collaboration. And then that would be combined with the needs that you identify in collaboration with community organizations and as you identify the priorities. And, um, the, the, uh, the health and wellness center is, is, um, well, it's unique in that it's an opportunity to collaborate with another, um, taxing body and a great community partner. So I wanted to present this as part of what I, I, you know, recommend as the city, but this is not, uh, again, it's not up for a vote tonight and it will be considered in the context of all the other needs.
So just to clarify, you're not suggesting a separate timeline from other timelines we've discussed with getting community feedback and working with RPC. This is just informational as we continue.
This is informational. Um, it, it would, it would help greatly in terms of, um, for this facility to get started on, on the summer, it would help greatly if decisions could be made quickly. But I know I've had conversations with you, for example, where there may be other organizations who need funding or who deserve funding. So we've got a lot, you know, we've got flexibility here.
Yeah, that, that clarification is just helpful. Uh, again, yes, certainly. See, with the timeline that the park district is working with that, you know, there is that more imminent need. And, and I think we, you know, Diane, you're correct that we've also talked about that with some of our other local agencies, that there's a more pressing need than the, the timeline, but that we've been discussing with RPC. So thank you for that clarification.
But the process with RPC is ongoing and the community engagement piece should start next week and we want to be very efficient with that as well. So, you know, I know everyone is anxious to, to, um, to do something with this.
All right, other questions for? Are there any other questions before we move on? Oh, James?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess, um, thank you for the answers to the previous questions, because I had some, some questions along those lines. I really think that this needs to go into the process that we promised the public for the last six months as far as engagement and being able to weigh in on, on where we should focus things. I'm curious though, this raises a question to me and I, I've been aware of this project with the park district and think it's a valuable resource, particularly for an area of town that, that could use more resources to that effect. But I do wonder, um, if we, if we're talking about collaborations, have we, have we talked to the school district about, um, needs that might have arise that we could collaborate on? I, I have to assume, you know, Wiley and Thomas Payne schools have had their renovations delayed for years as other schools have gone first. I have to assume that, um, the funding for that has taken a hit because, uh, they, they get that, um, from the facility sales tax that, that goes in to support that. So I just, I just wonder if we're going to talk about collaborating and using these funds to do things, what other components of collaboration should be brought to the table? And this is something I would have expected to happen with the public engagement process that, uh, should be starting soon.
I don't know, uh, if that's a question for the, I assume that's a question for the mayor, James. Is, is that?
Yeah, I would not ask the park district to answer.
I just double checked.
I didn't realize that was a question. Um, I, good question. I mean, we are beginning the process next week. Or continuing the process next week.
Jay, do you have another question or is your hand?
Okay. Go for it. I, I was hoping that from any perspective, folks could talk a little bit more about how this particular project or the, the pieces that were discussed tonight, um, are designed to address the, the violence piece. I, you know, I heard kind of a little, little piece of that, um, but I'd love to hear a little bit more because that is something that is a very imminent need that I know is a huge priority for all of us.
Well, I can, I can.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I, I'll start off and turn it over to Tim. What, what I see this as, as the place, you know, where the place where a lot of these organizations that we will be collaborating with to address gun violence, you need a place to meet. You need a place to gather. You need a place that's convenient for people. And when you're bringing programming and services to, um, a neighborhood and to a city, you need a place to gather. The schools have been wonderful sometime in opening their doors, but the park district has I think more flexibility and, um, experience in programming. They specialize in programming. So when we talk about, um, community violence and I, when I, and which is a top priority and when we look at the, um, if we look to our neighboring city in Champaign and the blueprint for violence, a lot of the organizations they're funding are community based and they need a place to meet. And I see this well, health and wellness center as a place for people to be and to get that programming and to do those services in, in the neighborhoods. And we don't have it now. We don't have that space now.
Mayor, do you have another question? Oh, I'm sorry, Tim, did you want to respond?
Just was gonna add, kind of add on to Diane's comment. Um, you know, obviously we work with many of the other local partners, um, the coalition, the schools, Urbana groups, countywide groups, um, in order to, you know, improve what we can offer our families and youth. Um, as Mayor mentioned, you know, we currently don't have an appropriate facility and, um, you know, this would create that place, that would create that neighborhood place, that, you know, opportunity in Urbana to bring people together. So it's really layer upon layer of opportunity and benefits for the various groups. Um, so we, we hope that, you know, this project would jump out and, and be a help to that. Certainly we wouldn't imply with end community violence. Um, but if we start turning the tide, create new and different opportunities, we think that'd make a, a big difference.
James, do you have another question?
Uh, Jay, Jay reminded me of my first question, which I had forgotten, which is a couple, a couple of things I'd be curious about. One is the, um, types of programs, uh, that the, for mental health that were discussed as a collaboration with the mental health board. I'd, I'd really be interested to know what more specifics, maybe not tonight, but in the process about what they're talking about, because I think that's a very helpful resource. And then the other thing is when you do community, for the park district, when you do community input, um, for things like this, do you, um, geocode the participants in that anyway? So you could tell us how many of the residents, um, south of Washington and east of Kench and north of Florida participated in and, and had their voice heard in this process?
James, I would, uh, respond, you know, one, we, uh, could definitely make everyone available our vision book, which really kind of catalogs the entire process and all the input. So that's something we can send on, uh, to have you take a look at. We weren't able to geocode every, you know, participant's, um, you know, input. And we did some of this work, you know, as we ran into COVID as well. But I know when we had our first, very first open house pre-COVID, it was at the Phillips Rec Center, we had, uh, well over 50 people that came out and spent an entire evening, you know, just sharing input. Um, that's quite a good turnout for us to, you know, get, uh, input. We also have survey information. We can go backwards and look and see if we can find locational information on that, um, so we can do some more research.
Yeah, I just, I, from a standpoint of this is an area that could use more resources. I, I just wanted to make sure that this is the resource they would prioritize or in the set of resources they would prioritize.
Tim, I, I'd add that when we, uh, go out with our Urbana, um, and we're doing programming in, in neighborhoods of, of need, uh, we're often doing community input there as well. We've, we've been getting input on this facility in terms of what sort of programs people should having. Uh, and then we, we do have geocoded data for existing program users and we, we, we assess that with some regularity just to see what neighbors we're touching, which ones we're not, so we can work more, in a more focused manner on those neighborhoods we're not. And then finally, uh, we've, we've had a sort of a, uh, a, um, launch ceremony where we welcomed the neighborhood, uh, around Prairie Park out, invited uh, neighbors to come and learn more about the facility and share what sort of programming they would find impactful. Uh, we flyered all the neighborhoods around, around the park and encouraged folks to come out and then we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
All right, Charisse?
Um, yeah. My question, am I muted? No, okay. My question is basically, um, what kind of outreach are, do you have regarding, uh, well, I would just say basically my ward, King Park is in my ward. And I know that, that are the park district, uh, partnered with, um, with the Jetty Roads to do the, the vaccinations at King Park. Um, so what I wanted to know is what kind of outreach you have for that area regarding, I don't know if it would be transportation or what it would be to get the, the children more involved. If you're going to have a lot of this kind of programming, uh, what, the way I see it, I, I suppose is more like, um, on this side of town, uh, a lot of kids use Douglas Center in the Douglas Annex in Champaign. That is part, uh, they have really good programming for, for seniors, at least they, pre-COVID, they definitely had great programming for seniors and, um, and, um, uh, young people in the area. So I'd like to know what kind of, uh, how that's going to help my, my ward.
Well, I can say right, right now, some of the things we do is scholarships for youth basketball. That does happen over at King School. Um, we do do play days in the park, um, in the summer, throughout the summertime, um, with Urbana. Um, and we do lots of, um, I would say connections with the schools and trying to get the information out to the kids. Um, from a busing standpoint, we're still trying to work on that whole transportation piece. I mean, if, you know, there's lots of, you know, they're, they're closer to Crystal Lake Pool, but, uh, Learman's going to be closer to the new, um, wellness facility. So I mean, ultimately we want to continue to work and see how we can get kids and adults of all ages through, to, through Urbana to whatever we're offering, whether it's at Crystal Lake or, or over by the new health and wellness facility. So, um, we've had discussions on how we get, you know, is there some way we can offer M T D, uh, passes to individuals and families to try and, um, be able to help with that transportation issue. We've worked with some church groups that have, you know, partnered with us at events and, and brought, I know Tommy from Learman Neighborhood worked with a, um, a church that brought youth over from his neighborhood over to Crystal Lake Park Pool where we did a backpack event, um, before COVID. So those are all the scenarios we're trying to work through and find ways to break down those barriers. Um, but I think it all, all comes together with everybody partnering to find out way, ways to make that happen. Um, whether it's churches or M T D or, and us trying to find ways to make that happen. Some apartment complexes do have buses, so we've, we've utilized that as well. Um, we had a, um, immigrant, immigrant event at Crystal Lake as well. And there was a church group that took a bus, took bus trips from, um, the Ivanhoe Estates area and brought individuals over. So those are all things that we're still trying to figure out the secret formula for, but, uh, things we need to continue to work towards.
Okay, sounds like there, there will be a lot of questions and this will be a continuing discussion. Thanks, Charisse. I'll take the chair back. Mary Alice.
Uh, Diane, before you do, I think Shandra hasn't had an opportunity to ask her question, so.
Oh, sorry.
Let's, let's have her answer and then I'll, then I'll relinquish the chair after that.
Thank you.
I, I thank you for the presentation. This project sounds very exciting. Um, do you have an idea as to how many scholarships you offer now for, um, park district programs? And do you see that number increasing with this new facility?
I, I can give you an idea before COVID. Um, before COVID, we would do, um, roughly around, uh, we'd have roughly a hundred and $20,000 worth of scholarships that were applied for. Um, that is scholarships that would get partial payment for. We also have another scholarship through a donation, um, which is roughly 25,000 a year. Um, and that was primarily during COVID. And we're roughly utilizing about 20,000 of that a year. If that helps.
Do you see, um, so that 120,000, is that just internal money being offered for scholarships? And do you see that number increasing with the new facility to be able to welcome more, um, more families in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I, I see us offering, just like we do with Crystal Lake Park Pool, when we built that facility, um, we built in a 5% of our revenue capacity for scholarships. And when we put this budget together, we will do the same.
Thank you.
All right, and the chair returns back to Diane.
Thank you. And, um, just to wrap up, um, next week you'll be hearing from Will Polczewski and possibly RPC, but they'll be, uh, sharing the plan for community outreach and that'll get underway next week as well. So, so we're, we want to, um, make sure we're very effective and productive and we get this process going. Thank you so much to the park district and for all the questions and for all the information you provided. Okay, we'll move on to public input. If you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand. Uh, Brandy McCoy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, my name's Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. Um, I'd like to ask again about the U P D use of force policy. Um, at the end of the publicly viewable conversation, TASER displays and discharges, to my understanding, were required to be documented and reported to CPRB. This has since been changed to only TASER discharges being documented, let alone sent over for review. So, um, I guess I'm just looking for clarification. Is this an ordinance violation as determined when the policy was finalized, the way that I understood it? Um, if so, what's the plan to address it? Uh, we can't leave it unaddressed and expect Urbana citizens to trust police will hold themselves accountable when appropriate. That's the whole point of the CPR, uh, CPRB. Um, and if I'm wrong, please, please correct me. I mean, let me know that I'm, you know, sounding, you know, ridiculous, but I just, this is, this is a, a, a big concern for me, for, for the police department to just have the ability to to have to come to council to, you know, address a policy, but then not have to come to council to change it. It just doesn't make sense to me. Um, but if there truly, if there was a violation, something has got to be done about it. Um, holding the police accountable is the only way forward and ignoring, um, uh, violations like this is, I mean, it's just a, it's a straight step, step back, unfortunately. So curious about that. And, uh, on a more positive note, I'm super excited about the community composting program. Um, I'll definitely be spreading the word once that's available to the public, but I was also curious how the city planned to inform people of the pilot program and the benefits of composting. Like, is there going to be kind of a marketing campaign, like a mailer type thing? Um, curious about that. And also about how long the pilot will go. This might be stuff that you, you've answered in the past, so I, I appreciate your patience, but how long the pilot would last and what the metric of success would be to make it a permanent fixture for our environmental infrastructure in Urbana? Thanks so much.
Well, thank you very much. Next up is Angel Johnson.
Hey, I'm here. Okay, hello, good evening. Yes. This is some very exciting news, isn't it? Because I've been with, uh, speaking with you, uh, guys, the city council since 2014. However, I don't believe that you guys, Sheila Dawes, we went back and forth. You didn't want to have a youth, nothing in Urbana, it seems like. You turned me down for land. You turned me down for money. When that land came available over there, uh, on Broadway in Washington, the old Washington preschool, I couldn't get that. I couldn't get the houses that was empty in Urbana. I am a owner, my whole family. We own a youth center in our home. We break barriers with these children. We go out at night and get people and. We break barriers with these children. We go out at night and get people and help the police. And we do so much in our community. We have asked for funding to help us get this youth center daycare out of our home. Over and over again each year, you have turned me down and y'all was not interested. And you didn't know this and you didn't know that. I am anti-gun violence. I am with the Minister Alliance. I am a pastor in this community, a youth pastor. I worked my butt off. And to hear that you guys didn't even inform me, I live in Urbana. Ma'Marlin, you know exactly where I live at, right around the corner where you're building the wellness center. I even reached out to the wellness center when I found out about it last month. I said, wow, we never heard about this, uh, this wellness center coming and they dealing with the youth and they dealing with this and dealing with the same thing we dealing with that I've been talking and speaking with Ma'Marlin and Sheila Dawes, who turned us down for grants, who turned us down for money, who said, no, those lands go to some, some other stuff. Okay, yes, I am upset and I am a black African American woman. And yes, I am sick. So when we get sick and tired, you better hear our voice elevate. Because how else can you address an issue that someone is hurting you and constantly messing with you? I'm a homeowner. I pay taxes. Don't overlook me because I don't own a hotel that brings you lots of taxes, but you charge me taxes and raisin when you want to. I want mine. I want a youth center with Angel Youth Center in this Urbana community, lest you gonna hear from me. Ma'Marlin, you are wrong. You always do underhanded. They should have had us involved in this. When I reached out to the wellness center, they said they're not you, they ain't even thinking about no daycare or no youth center. How in the world you gonna come up with some gun violence? And we go out here at night and get these kids off the street. We go out here when you're probably sleeping and protected by the police. We don't have no protection in our neighborhood. What is wrong with y'all? You would not do this. I, I want the public to know. We've been asking for help. Get this youth center and daycare out of our home. And I could prove our children are doctors. Anesthesia doctors come from us. Teachers, lawyers, Air Forcemen, military people. We have worked for years and years and years, over 30 years I've been in daycare business. What is wrong with y'all? We go to City Council member and y'all been laughing at us the whole time and turning us down and working with Don Elmore, the SBA, the this, the this, this. And y'all can't find me no funding. What is wrong with y'all? But I'ma pray about it. And God has revealed and recovered and he taking the cover off y'all. That's what God is doing. Keep playing with God. Keep playing with God. Y'all playing with God and he don't play. Let me tell you something. This is God. All this happening, I'm glad I seen it. I'm glad it happened because it's out here and it need to be out here. And then God have a public private meeting? What's wrong with y'all? You don't have no meeting on, uh, in public and we on Zoom. Why we on Zoom this week?
Ms. Johnson, your time's up. Thank you. Okay, next person, um, to speak is John Kraft.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I was just court curious how you could have an in-person meeting last week on the 22nd. And then all of a sudden it's too dangerous to have an in-person meeting this week. And additionally, public meetings, public meetings are public meetings. Every person attending a public meeting has a right to record a public meeting. What I read about you guys doing on February 22nd, and what I saw on the video, some people saying it's illegal to record a meeting, uh, other people shutting audio recorders off. What's going on? Why would you treat the public like that? And why couldn't you just allow the recording like the public has a right to do? I think you know you're wrong and you need to apologize to whoever was there. That's all I have. Thanks.
Um, Phyllis Clark, your hand is up?
Yes, please. Well, Mr. Kraft brought up the February 22nd meeting. First of all, transparency seems to be applied only to local government. However, those who pretend to be about the business of supplying information to the masses feel that they can skirt by the truth with a whitewashed lie. The Open Meetings Act has no provision for anyone to be rude, disruptive, disrespectful, or intrusive to any governmental body conducting public business. Taking liberties just because is unacceptable and should never be tolerated under no uncertain terms. Respect and dignity goes both ways. Throwing the rock and hiding their hand means that you can't be trusted. Be accountable for your own actions. It is the right of the governmental body to maintain the decorum in a meeting. The mayor or her designee, as well as any committee chair, has the right to designate a specific space where the public can record and film meetings. If this is violated, the person requesting to record or film will be respectfully asked to stay in the designated area. If they continue to show a disregard for the city's conduct.
Well, you're not going to see that board anyway.
They can be.
Once that thing goes past our, for our purposes.
Or if it.
Probably does make more sense.
They can be, uh, removed for disorderly conduct and being a public nuisance. That's all I.
Get up above. It's going to show.
Yes, but I don't think.
Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Sarah Nixon. Go ahead, please. Is Sarah Nixon in the meeting?
Sarah Nixon appears to be unmuted, but, um, not hearing from Sarah.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to Reverend Dr. Underwood and come back to Sarah if her audio gets to work. Go ahead, Dr. Underwood.
Okay, they had me muted. So am I unmuted now? I just saw something that said I can unmute myself. Did I? Was I able to do that?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
But I just got unmuted and they already started doing the time on me. But okay, that's all right. Um, uh, I've been listening to everyone. Thank you very much, Pastor Johnson. I feel you. I really feel you. And a lot of people have been talking to me that feel what you're saying and have not been included, have been excluded. No inclusivity in Urbana is what they're saying. Uh, I feel sorry. Uh, uh, in listening to everything, I've been in this community for many, many years. And I've, I'm hearing pretty words. I'm hearing pretty words, but we need some action. And just like, uh, uh, Pastor Johnson has said, who know, who knows about the plain people? The regular people in the community. Just like when people were going to door to door, they're trying to get information about the comprehensive plan and others. Uh, people were saying they didn't have time to wait. Uh, you know, it was just, uh, a lack of, uh, really, uh, they were not really, uh, uh, wanting the people to give input. Now, I was busy and was unable to do it, but I wanted somebody to come back, you know, uh, and no one did. But I'm not going to worry about me because I can go to City Council meeting and I'm not afraid. I don't have a fear, but a lot of people have fear to go to get involved. Some people believe that their families will lose their jobs if they say this or that. We still have this in 2022. And I heard that the building were closed at nine, but then they said midnight basketball. And you've talked to, uh, Reverend Coleman, Pastor Coleman, we know all about him. And we've seen in the paper a lot of good work that he done and heard people talk about it. But, uh, if it's going to close at nine, uh, midnight basketball, uh, midnight terms is after hours. You know, and we know about, I'm just talking about a few things I've heard that, uh, we need to make sure, just like the Douglas seniors, you know, for years and years, you have Philip Center. Uh, and I was talking to somebody, why don't we try to, but cultural differences, just like the churches. The same, when we start being able to, uh, Christian people go to the same churches and try to, uh, do things constantly together. Is my timer up? No, well, who's talking? I'm talking. Uh, then we can say that we don't have a need for people of different cultures and different races, uh, uh, in different things, in different spaces. We've got to look at this thing realistically. I'm not against the Park District, nor am I against the school district. But the school district and the park district got to look and they've got, they got 25 million. I think, uh, I think it's Urbana or Champagne one, oh, no, Champagne, Urbana got 12 million. Champagne got 25 million. The school district. What programs, uh, do we see, uh, that's going to help? Old Black Joe and Long Town Sally. I say that for a purpose. That mean the plain old people. We've got to get those people involved. We got to help these families, not buildings and structures. Now, okay, if you have it in the, uh, in the, if you have us coming in the, uh, in, in the, uh, 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 the, the, what do you call the bishop, the, um, uh, uh, we just talked about, uh, the fire department. You gonna have rules and regulations that's going to be against us. I don't want to get, uh, upset.
Dr. Underwood, Dr. Underwood, your time is up. Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you. Listen, people.
Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Nicholas Dale.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I am a resident of Champagne, Illinois. Um, I'm here to advocate for, uh, in-person meetings. Um, we have a population in Arthur, Illinois of, uh, about 5,000 Amish and Mennonite. Now, the Amish only travel by, uh, horse and buggy, uh, but Mennonites, uh, can be transported by a van to any public meeting they'd like to, um, in the state. And if you guys are familiar, uh, or if you're not familiar with the Amish and the Mennonite, uh, they don't use technology as part of their religious beliefs. Um, the Mennonite have a little bit more freedom, uh, since they can be driven around in vans. I think, um, they may, if I'm not mistaken, be allowed to use flip phones, but they can't use Zoom. Um, so 5,000 of, uh, Illinois citizens, um, are consequently having their rights violated because of COVID. I know today was the first day that Governor Pritzker removed the mask mandate. Um, so I'm here to advocate for, uh, in-person, uh, public meetings again, um, so that all citizens, uh, of Illinois may be able to participate. Thank you for giving me my time.
Thank you. Uh, we'll try Sarah Nixon one more time. Go ahead, Sarah. Okay, we're still not hearing audio. Does anyone else wish? Sarah, is that you?
No. Oh, yes, it is.
Sarah, your audio is reverberating. We can't hear.
Is this better?
That's better.
Okay, I now can't hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, I don't know what happened before, but I phoned in, in the hopes of getting telephone input and emailed the council, but I don't think anyone saw it. So that's why there was reverberation the second time. So hello, City Council, this is Sarah Nixon. Um, first of all, absolutely everything that Angel Johnson said this evening and every single ounce of her outrage is fully justified. Where is the promised extensive outreach campaign for public engagement and the idea generating and decision-making process for the ARPA funds? And while we wait and wait for these promised, uh, town halls and, you know, questionnaires, um, Mayor Marlin and her pointies appear to be, um, scheming completely behind the scenes to funnel the funds into pet projects or internal city needs, quote unquote, while absolutely bypassing taxpayers' input. This evening, the mayor referred to the continuing public engagement. What a deplorable misrepresentation. The public has been disgracefully neglected. And Ms. Johnson expressed exactly what needs to happen, funding for facilities right in the community. And it was disgraceful that you cut Ms. Johnson off when you allowed your friends from the Park District to go on and on and on. I found that to be just ugly. And on that note, secondly, I urge you, City Council, to not approve one penny of ARPA funds for the, uh, atrocity proposed this evening. Um, now, Urbana does not need this ugly facility, facility. This is the first we're hearing about this great so-called need, uh, for a massive public health, uh, monolith. Um, when on the contrary, Urbana residents have been vocal, they have been coming to City Council for over at least two years now with a long list of desperate infrastructure and social justice and violence prevention needs. Um, and I have also repeatedly urged the, the city to understand that Urbana critically and desperately needs a family justice center to provide wraparound services related to child abuse, family violence, domestic violence, and incarceration reentry. Now, last but not least, it is arguably nothing is more important to Urbana residents than public safety. And it's been extremely troubling to see next to no outreach being done or information disseminated to the public to inform us of the series, uh, City Council Goal Setting Meetings. Somebody has their microphone on and it's distracting. Um, meetings organized by appointed officials and staff. And it was downright alarming to learn that despite. Could the person who has their microphone on play? Um, you muted me instead of the person whose microphone was on. Can you hear me again?
We can hear you, Sarah.
Okay, you muted me for some seconds there. Um, and then I was asked to unmute again. It was alarming to see what happened at last week's meeting where a couple of the handful of people who've managed to show up attempted to exercise their and collect. attempted to exercise their and collectively all of Urbana's civil rights in recording the meeting. And as I'm running out of time, um, while they were attempting to record the meeting, had their equipment tampered with and disabled. And since I'm running out of time, I want to say thank you to Alderwoman Grace Wilkin for voicing her objection to the unlawful actions. And I and the rest of your constituents collectively want to know why, why was Ms. Wilkins the only voice standing up for democracy? Not a rhetorical question. The people deserve better than what they got last week and deserve an answer. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, Kenita Faye.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Kenita.
Thank you. Um, good evening, good evening. My name is Kenita Faye. I would like to thank you so much for your service. It is a hard job. I have been following you guys, listening to all the meeting, attending as many meetings as I could, and you guys are fantastic. You work very hard and for that we, we thank you. Um, tonight, I would like to express, uh, our support for the Park, Urbana Park District Health and Wellness Facility, uh, project. Since from the presentation, this project will serve what our community needs. The Park District has a strong relationship with our community and different organizations. They are already a part of different programs related to gun violence. They already started it whether or not, uh, they advertised. They worked with, um, current organization and hosted, uh, Remembrance Tree. Uh, they worked with us during the Walk for Peace. So they're already doing their job. Um, I hope that the council would give the Park District full support and beyond. With all of their expertise and deep root in the community, they definitely would give us what we need for all the programs and all the wonderful ideas that the council members have brought to the table. And just like what we discussed earlier, we need a place to meet to make things happen. So, uh, that's all for tonight. Thank you so much for your work and, uh, we're looking forward to hearing more, uh, from you and, uh, we, uh, we, we, we are here, uh, with you guys and we're gonna continue providing constructive input to you to support your work. Thank you again for your service. Have a good night.
Thank you. So anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, Ms. Johnson, well, each person gets one chance to speak. I see your hand is up again. All right, we'll move on to council input and communications. Grace.
Thank you. Um, thank all our presenters and members of the public who shared tonight also. Um, wanted to share my two cents here about the presentations. It's definitely not what I was expecting. I was expecting that for the city portion of ARPA, that it would be pretty quantifiable, objective costs. The one I saw there that made sense was, um, compensating and thinking about the census and the census lost revenue. I was imagining that it would be things like that that were more concrete, like overtime pay or PPE or things that were actual costs that were related to surviving or recovering from the pandemic. Um, it seems to me very inappropriate to combine other aspects outside of the city, like the Health and Wellness Center and the fire station, multipurpose community spaces. I think this should be decided through the RPC process and the public input process that we've already established. Um, I think that we've also, it seems contradictory, I mean, it is contradictory, that we've had community groups give presentations and have had to be very intentional that it didn't appear that the city was favoring any projects over others. And it just seems like that's what this is. Um, and I do generally support the Health and Wellness Center. I would love more public input and I generally support community spaces in the fire stations. I think this needs to be done through the proper channels and have more public input and consider all the options openly. It feels like this is a way of circumventing the agreed-upon process and limiting the RPC process and the public input. So I don't think that should be done that way. Um, a few other notes, um, I wanted to speak briefly about the compost pilot. This is between the Urbana Landscape Recycling Center and Champaign County Environmental Stewards. Uh, the way I understand it, the city supports this project, but it's not a city-operated program. So for recruitment, Champaign County Environmental Stewards nonprofit is leading that. Um, they have Facebook sent out letters to some potential, um, food waste generators and then have also been doing in-person follow-up. Um, the contact for that is S. Monte, Monty, S. M. O. N. T. E. at C. C. E. N. V. S. T. E. W. dot com. Um, or Scott Test, I think is S. R. Test at urbanaillinois.us. And, um, possibly the city could put up that flyer on their Facebook or, um, webpage for that information out to the public. Um, and hopefully that project will continue and grow. I don't think there's an end date, um, just kind of getting started with a few businesses and growing from there. Um, I also agree that we need to address and update the CPRB ordinance. I've been saying that. I definitely still agree that that's something we need to do. Um, and I agree with following Open Meetings Act and promoting transparency in our open meetings and city planning. Thank you.
Any other council member comments? Jia.
Um, I just want to echo kind of what Grace shared of, you know, I, I know the, the Health and Wellness Center is an exciting opportunity, but I do think that it's important that we've made this commitment to our community to have community input throughout the ARPA process and that this process holds for, for that, you know, across the board. Um, there have been other things that have come up that are very pressing. Um, you know, like, like we've been talking about related to gun violence, where we haven't pushed through to, to get ARPA money out to where it may be vitally needed. Um, same thing with housing. I think if we are going to make exceptions, it needs to be for specific items that are particularly time-sensitive. Otherwise, we have a process in place for a reason and it's important that it doesn't seem biased or, you know, based off of individual preferences. It needs to be something that is community-informed. So I was excited to hear from the Park District. I do think it's important that we continue to, to work through the process we have established, um, with RPC. And if we are going to make exceptions, it's important that we are clarifying exactly why. And for me, at least, I think it should be in response to imminent, um, specific needs that are pandemic-related if we're using those pandemic funds. Um, aside from that, I do want to make sure that folks know that the request for qualifications for the community safety review and then, uh, through the lens of racial equity and social justice has been released. Um, so that is on the city's website. Um, and proposals are due by March 31st. And so I hope to see a lot of progress come out of that, that initiative as well.
Chris.
Thank you. Um, I would also let go, uh, council member in and Colsetti's sentiments that it does seem, she and Seven, when we got the ARPA, that somehow some delays and, and preventing the public to ever participate in this process. And here tonight, we have the mayor going ahead and along with her, you know, and while those, um, her intent may be good, like, uh, Jay said and Grace, you know, the project plan looks promising. Uh, certainly, you know, I mean, it's in space for a fair state like.
Chris, Chris, you're. Chris, your connection is really terrible. Can we, can we come back to you?
Is, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
We can't hear a thing. Okay, does any other council member want to speak? Ja- James.
Yeah, it's, it's been mentioned several times tonight by individuals about, uh, what happened at the council study session on council goals, which was the fifth such meeting that we had. I want to explain my experience, which I had never seen happen before at a public meeting. And, um, the rules about recording at a public meeting do allow for the public body to set, um, how, uh, how recording can be done. What happened was someone walked up to each of the tables, none of which had more than two council members at them, and put individual recording devices on those tables um, for, to capture the discussion that was happening at those tables. That, that, um, is not normal. It wouldn't. Uh, I don't think any council member would allow someone to walk up to the front of the room if we were in person and putting a recording device next to them. That is, that is not, uh, a proper recording of what's going on at a public meeting. That is, that's just not proper. I've never seen that happen before at all of the public meetings I've been involved with over the last decade. It wasn't appropriate. Um, myself, I know what I did, which was ask the person who did it several times respectively to pick it up and take it away. That's what I did, uh, and then we proceeded because it was more important to get our work done than to address what was going on there, which was not a proper approved, compliant way for someone to record what goes on at a public meeting. Everything that happened at each of those tables was reported out loudly in the room and shared. So those discussions, the outcomes of those discussions, which I look at as, you know, a draft, a place to test ideas and talk about them and develop them. All of, all of what came out of those discussions was reported out loudly so that everyone can hear it. So if anything that was conducted anywhere near like what a public meeting, uh, would be, even though it was a study session, anybody in the room could have recorded that and shared that and understood what the outcome of that was. So the behavior that was going on was not, I don't believe, an intent of sharing what was going on at a public meeting. It was, uh, I think it was intimidating. I think it was intimidating to some council members. I think it was most intimidating to staff who were there to help us work on this and to engage in free dialogue about ideas. And so don't, don't let somebody tell you that this was an appropriate way to record a public meeting. It was not. Thank you.
Chris, do you want to try again?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh, give it a try. You seem to be reverberating again.
Oh, okay. Um, let me know if I do and I'll, I'll just save my comment. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna save my comments for next week.
Yeah, it's not working. Sorry.
Chris, you could try, um, turning off your camera, camera while you speak. That might allow you to talk.
Yeah, you're frozen right now.
Any other council member have a comment tonight? Shereen.
Um, I just want to dovetail on what James just said. Um, I, uh, I didn't feel intimidated. I felt insulted, though, regarding that, how that was done. That was totally improper. OMA does allow the public to witness us having a meeting. Um, in those types of situations, which it was not a city council meeting, which has been said that it was and it was not. There were no voting, there was no voting on anything. Everything was shared out that was discussed at the tables. Um, I don't know, I, I, there were people walking around our tables actually with their phones on and taking pictures or recording. I have no idea. But I would not, that would not be allowed during a city council meeting if we were in the gallery. And that is not the, uh, proper way to, um, my understanding regarding OMA is that the public is invited, the public gets input, they have the input opportunity. And, um, I don't recall any, either of the people that were circling our tables, um, coming up and having any comment during the public comment section. There were only maybe six people that showed up in the first place. Um, so I, I felt very, um, I felt as if the, this is something, you know, you intimidating people into, uh, while we're trying to have a discussion and actually have come up with ideas of what can go on and what can happen and so on and so forth, and how we're going to address this particular subject that we were discussing. And it was a discussion in a study session regarding public safety. I felt, um, that it was inappropriate. And so I, what I do hope is that, um, it, nothing like that happens in the future. Thank you.
Okay, I do want to respond in relation to the meeting on February 22nd and set the record straight. The meeting complied with the Open Meetings Act. The city has the right, the obligation to establish reasonable logistics for accessible, safer, and productive public meetings. Public bodies may prescribe areas for members of the public, for the media to be, as well as the meeting space for members of the public body and staff. Public bodies may prescribe the areas from which members of the public may make recordings. And this is always how meetings have worked. On February 22nd, two members of the public chose to leave the area set aside for the audience. They entered our meeting space. These individuals set up tripods holding video cameras within the meeting space. They placed audio recorders on some of the meeting tables. They moved the recorders around among the tables during the meeting. They inserted themselves into the meeting space. They circled tables with cell phones to record and take photos. They stood next to and behind meeting participants. At one point, they placed a cell phone on top of the paper that participants were trying to write on. And the saddest thing is the behavior didn't end there. They followed staff members out to the parking lot after the meeting with the camera. They followed a member of the public out into the hallway. They followed other staff members into the back of the room and they stood by them trying to record a private conversation. I don't know what the motivation for any of this was, but I can tell you what people experienced and what they felt because I've been hearing it for the past week. They felt intimidation, disruption, and frankly, suppression of speech. The free exchange of ideas was suppressed because of this behavior. As we've always noted and we will continue to do, we've always provided for members of the public to record meetings as required by law. We've also always depended on people to observe common and reasonable civil behavior so we can do the work of the city. Future disruptions of public meetings, which impact the ability of the public body to conduct its business, will be addressed.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees. Uh, we have a report out from Councilmember Chandra Bishop.
Good evening. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, um, we have one item on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2022 dash 02 dash 020R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium sub-recipient agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission Home AARP Allocation Plan FY 2021 to 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Well, the click please call the roll. That's on the consent agenda.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes.
The next item is on the regular agenda. I brought to you by the Committee of the Whole for approval, ordinance number 2022-02-009, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Six Omnibus.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I'll need to abstain from this one as well for being a board member of Champaign County Environmental Stewards, and their grant acceptance is one item on this omnibus budget amendment. And I think also highlights some of the issues for this in the future, how it would be possible to split it up. Can we do that on the floor? Or would that have to be a whole separate budget amendment?
We'll have to figure out the process for that and let you know.
Because I think that would be good for future stuff where then someone can abstain from one item and not have to abstain from all the other budget items.
It would require, of course, notifying staff of the conflict ahead of time. So we can figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? James?
I was just gonna say, I shared with each of the council members my question about this at the Committee of the Whole because of the previous indication Grace had that she had a conflict of interest. And it's just an unfortunate circumstance that one thing in this group of things would cause Grace to have to abstain. And so if we could, and she had all she had previously abstained on a matter related to this. So I think it was something we could have known. I I did suggest that in that circumstance, we could move to divide the question. But unfortunately, because this is an ordinance, I don't think it's that simple to to divide a question for an ordinance, because that requires a new ordinance number and so forth. So maybe it's not something we have to fix this particular time, but I would encourage us to to work on it for the future. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes.
Our next item is Resolution Number 2022-02-021R, a resolution approving the engagement of Lauderbach and Amon LLP for independent financial auditing services for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2022, June 30th, 2023, June 30th, 2024, June 30th, 2025, and June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice or Shandra, seconded by Sharice. And is there any discussion? This this I should note, this resolution was corrected as requested last week, so it's a five-year contract. And you'll see the correction in the draft there. Grace, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I was wondering if it was possible to have more specific clarification on this not being a conflict of interest. I sent an email out to Council and Finance right before the meeting. And I haven't had a chance to look, but I would appreciate the specific rules on that. At least the SEC, was it Securities Exchange Commission, does list actuarial services as a specific prohibited non-audit service for an auditor. And so I would appreciate more information on that. I think we were given some about using a third party for actuarial services. Just to know if we could have some more information about potential conflict of interest.
Sure. There are three staff members who need to be admitted. Elizabeth Hannan, Aliana Robinson, and Shannon Clark, please. And I'm not sure which staff wants to respond to this. Shannon?
Yes, hello. Yes, Grace, so the standard that you found was from the PCOAB, which is the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board. So that is for publicly traded companies, so SEC companies. You're right, that was the reference to SEC companies. This does not apply to governments. So government accounting standards boards are the pronouncements that apply to governments. So you found, you know, a reference to a different set of standards for for companies that are traded by the SEC, the public companies. So for clarification, what the memo stated was how the independence requirements work for governments. So there are no specific accounting pronouncements for governments, which is why, you know, you probably didn't find any there. However, for governments that have federal awards that are $750,000 or more, or Turbana has, there are single audit requirements because we get that much in federal spending and that we expend each year. So with that, the Lauderbach and Amon has they consult with this company, MWM Consulting, that provides an opinion on the note disclosures only. So that's just the footnote disclosures that support these actuarial valuations. So again, this is something that they do for many other companies. They have, you know, and also this is for the police and fire pension funds, which have separate boards than the city of Urbana. We have a separate board, you know, it's not the same board. So they engage these services independently. And I think Elizabeth had some more information on that part of it.
Yeah, I just I just think it might help to clarify that relationship a little bit. So you've probably seen appointments where the mayor appoints trustees to the police and fire pension boards. But the mayor has the ability to appoint only two trustees out of a total of five. There are also two trustees elected from the active duty members of the police and fire departments and one elected by the retirees for each of those pension funds as well. So the the city doesn't actually control the pension funds. We only have a a voice in that through the mayor's appointments.
Thank you. And then more specifically, because it says that this arrangement meets independent standards for organizations subject to single audits. Were you saying that there are there independent standards for organizations subject to single audit? Because it sounds like you're saying there are not. I'm confused if there are these independent standards or not.
So there are independent standards for for every audit. And so what we're saying is that Lauderbach and Amon has reviewed all the standards and all the rules related to independence and has followed those rules. And there is no conflict of interest with the way with basically auditing our police and pension fire fire funds and providing actuarial services, except they will engage with MWM Consulting to provide an opinion on the note disclosures. It's just very technical accounting rules. And again, they do this for many other governments with this same relationship. So those are just the rules for government accounting standards board. They are not the same as the PCAOB for publicly traded companies.
Yes, thank you. I understand and appreciate that. I guess what I'm asking for is just what piece of the independent standards, you know, we could point to and look at to say it's silent on this or it explicitly allows it. That was the question.
I don't have the exact wording of the standards. Is that I guess that's something we could provide.
Thank you.
Jaya?
I do appreciate the point of clarification that there is some other piece that's at least looking at part of this. I understand that it's compliant, but I think that anytime that there's even a perception of a of a conflict of interest, it's really important that we are having these discussions and that it's clearly laid out. I think this memo helps with that. Because if you hear, just like thinking about it, taking that step back, we're going to have an audit, you know, a firm audit us, but they also do work for the city. That on its face doesn't sound good, right? So I think that having these conversations and explaining how they are differentiated and what standards are they are compliant with is really important. So I do appreciate that extra clarification. I think that Grace's questions are really, really important because even if there is not an actual conflict of interest, and this goes back to kind of the conversations we've been having about voting too, even the perception of a conflict of interest is something that has to be explained. So I I think I think that that is clear, but I do think that any additional documentation that we can have just to illustrate that is worth having on hand, because I think all of us know how important it is just to make sure that everything is is clearly delineated and is clear to the public as well.
Any other council questions or comments? Grace?
Thank you. Another question I had was on the resolution itself. I appreciate the changes that were made and changed that extension to now it reads in a possible three-year extension. And I was wondering if we could make it more specific, because I feel like it's kind of open to interpretation. I think it could be interpreted, as it was previously written, saying that it could extend through authorization from this resolution or needing a new consideration and approval process.
I believe on page one of the resolution, the sentence reads, "The mayor of the city of Urbana shall be and hereby is authorized to engage the services of Lauderbach and Amon LLP as the independent auditor for the city for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26." Period. Pursuant to the request for proposals issued for such services. Any reference to the three years additional is not in this resolution anymore.
So you're saying that then automatically after the five years, if we want to extend, then there is no standing resolution approving that? So it would automatically need a new review process and approval?
Yes.
Thank you. And then my other thoughts, I think going back to conflict of interest, I would really love to just be sure and just have all of the independent standards just I feel like as a responsibility to verify. You know, I do, I hear what you're saying, and I just feel it as another step of my own responsibility as a council member when making decisions to just be sure that we have I have all the information as much as possible. So I'm even considering, and I'd love to hear from more council members, but I'd be inclined to send this back to committee until we can just get everything clarified.
James?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I've been satisfied with the explanation. I already have some understanding of the differentiation between what an actuary does and what an auditor is reviewing with regard to what we're asking for here. And I understand the difference between those, and I'm comfortable with the fact that this auditor is not going to be reviewing the actuarial tables and making a statement on those. The problem would would occur if is if they were audit if they were auditing and they were doing transactional work for us as an accounting firm, because then they would be both responsible for the actions and then responsible for saying that the actions are okay. I I get it. I get the separation that has been described here. It's unfortunate that it's not something simple that is easy to to understand. But I don't think it's appropriate for council members to become experts on differentiating what actuary work is and what accounting work is and what the role of an auditor is. So I'm ready to go ahead and approve this.
Any other discussion? Jaya?
I guess I would I would echo kind of the combination of both of like, I think that explanation was important, but I do think that there's enough additional information at this point to move forward for myself personally. But I do think that that additional information was very useful, and I appreciate the staff gathering that for us.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Present.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And lastly, on the regular agenda, I move for approval of Resolution Number 2022-02-022R, a resolution adopting financial policies.
A second?
Moved by Shandra, seconded by James. Any discussion? Grace?
Thank you. This one I was trying to understand, and Elizabeth and Ally have been great at taking some time to help me understand this. So I wonder if I could just reiterate and they could just make sure that I have this understanding correct this time. So we're taking a system that has been done kind of in practice and making it more of a policy to where funds, money coming in from other funds for support services go into the general fund as they have, but they just get a specific allocation and specifically charged for that use flagged within the general fund instead of being more in the melting pot that they have like a specific allocated designation within the general fund for those administrative support services. Do I have it yet?
Um, yes, I believe you do.
Okay, and so then overall, there's no overall financial impact or on the funds. It's just putting into policy some of the practices on how administrative support services have been charged to certain funds.
Right, it's it's documenting the process, and they'll also be kind of a trueing up because the process hasn't been documented in the past. But but correct, there's obviously that number's going to change every year because it's going to be recalculated every year.
Thank you so much for the patience in trying to help me to understand what this change really means.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Shandra. Next up, reports of special committees. I don't believe there is any reports of officers.
I just wanted to take a quick minute to explain the policy on masking and the city building in particular right now. And I have to I have to give you a little context, which is that we are revamping our COVID policies for employees. And our policies for employees have three components, masking, testing, and COVID leave. And we have been in discussions with our our union representatives and some non-bargaining unit representatives as we reformulate those policies. But in the meantime, employees are still masking when they're in in a public setting in hallways or in meetings with other employees. And so we're asking the public, when they come into the city building, to voluntarily don a mask sort of. don a mask, sort of, you know, just to be consistent with, um, with what we're asking employees to do right now. It's entirely voluntary and we're continuing to supply masks in the lobby as people come in. So I just wanted to let people know that. And then as, as the employee policies evolve, so shall the policies for the city building.
And I would, I would tag onto that. We're also in discussions about when to return to in-person meetings. So if council members have opinions on that, please, please reach out. Uh, Chris, you had a question?
That was my question.
Yeah. So we should have an announcement next week. Um, under new business, we have resolution number 2022 dash zero two dash zero two three R, resolution approving certain amendments to revenue bonds issued by the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, for the benefit of Clark Lindsey Village. Sean Flynn is here as well as Dave Westner. So not sure who's going to address this one.
Well, thank you, Mary. I'll, I'll take the lead a little bit in terms of just kind of a background introduction and Sean can kind of take over as, uh, the, the bond counsel, I think, relative to these particular bond issues and, and the need for the changes. Um, as you maybe have seen in my memo, I tried to outline a little bit of a background of the nature of these particular kinds of bond issues, uh, because they're a little different in the sense that these were not issued for the benefit of the city itself, but actually issued for the benefit of Clark Lindsey Village, uh, which is a not-for-profit. So the not-for-profits can, in terms of assisting their developments, uh, try and coordinate with a local governmental entity to access taxes down to bond financing. And so back in 2004 and 2015, Clark Lindsey Village did, uh, coordinate with the city to take advantage of that. And the city acted as the issuer for those two, uh, bonds and, uh, provided that funding to Clark Lindsey Village for their projects. Uh, currently they're going under a corporate reorganization, uh, and due to that necessitates some changes to those original bond documents, um, relative to the named entity, I think, that's, uh, part of those documents. And so just a quick background for you on top of the memo that you received, and, and I'll let Sean kind of take you through a little bit more, uh, in terms of those documents and, and the need for the change.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave, and, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And as Dave said, Clark Lindsey Village is going through the corporate reorganization and under the existing bond documents, they agree not to change their corporate structure without the consent of the owners of the bonds and the city as issuer of the bonds. Uh, Bucy Bank is the, uh, owner of the bonds. They've had, they have agreed to these changes. Uh, Clark Lindsey Village is going through this corporate reorganization to really, it's for two reasons. One, to better position themselves for future growth and to, to better, uh, protect their assets from liability. And, uh, historically they've al- always operated as a single entity, uh, and what they're doing now is sort of splitting up, uh, themselves where they'll have one entity will be the operating company. That'll be Clark Lindsey Village. They'll create a second entity will be Clark Lindsey Holdings, which will hold all the assets. And then both those companies will, will operate under a parent company. And then, uh, so all three parties will be signing these amendments to the bond documents and they will all agree to be, uh, liable on the bonds, uh, which, which is why Bucy Bank as owner of the bonds is comfortable, uh, signing off on these amendments. Uh, and so like I said, under, under the existing bond documents, uh, these changes do require, uh, the consent of the city, but it no way, uh, puts any of the city's funds, uh, tax revenues, uh, at risk. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Flynn? Okay. Could I get, is that a fan? Grace?
Uh, yes, sorry. Just confirming that the only change here is just changing names because Clark Lindsey changed. Is that correct?
That's, yes. They, they, they are basically, they're, right now they're a single entity and they're going to be, at the end of corporate reorganization, they'll be, they'll consist of three separate entities. And so, uh, like one company will operate the facilities, one will own the facilities, and then you'll have the parent. So they, all three will then be signed a document. So, so you are, you are correct.
So it's two, just one, um, property or under the main one?
So they will have Lindsey Communities, they're creating a new parent organization called Lindsey Communities. And then under the parent organization, there'll be Clark Lindsey Village, Inc., which is the entity which has always been existence. Uh, and then they'll have another entity called Clark Lindsey Holdings, which will, uh, will be the owner of the property.
Okay. So I'm trying, I'm trying to s- this piece out here. The Clark Lindsey Village, it says, has requested the lender consent to the Clark Lindsey Village, Clark Lindsey Holding property transfer. So it's going just to the holding company or is it?
Currently, all the property is titled in the name of Clark Lindsey Village, Inc. And they're going to transfer title to a new entity called Clark Lindsey Holdings. And so there, there is going to be a property transfer, but it's all, i- i- it's a related entity, Clark Lindsey Village.
Right. And then just to reiterate is all three of those entities are going to be obligated on these, uh, to the point again, where the city is not going to have any obligation on these bonds at all. And realistically, at least in my mind, Sean can correct me if I'm wrong and kick me in the shin through the video, is, uh, is actually more secure because now you have three entities really that are obligated on, on the entire, uh, bond issues.
Thank you.
Shandra.
So one, one entity is splitting off into three, correct? And then, so is Lindsey Holding, so is Clark Lindsey Village, has that been a not-for-profit before or is Lindsey Holding, um, a new not-for-profit?
Clark Lindsey Village, Inc. has always been a not-for-profit and the, all three entities, it will be not-for-profits.
Okay. And then, and that remains, the, the property taxes remain unchanged?
Correct. They, they'll be, they'll be held by nonprofit, a different nonprofit name, but still a, a nonprofit at the end of the day.
A tax-paying nonprofit. Grace.
Uh, thank you. I was wondering, um, it's definitely understandable to not have this question off the top of anyone's head, um, but what other, how many kinds of nonprofits does the city have this kind of relationship with? And again, definitely doesn't have to be a right now answer, but something that definitely came up for me as a curiosity is kind of how common is this and what other nonprofits?
Elizabeth, Elizabeth may be able to answer that.
So I, I believe right now it's only Clark Lindsey Village. Um, it's, this is, this is kind of an unusual thing. It's called conduit debt. And the only reason they're able to do it is because we haven't used our full, um, authority to, to do private placement debt. So there is no other.
A lot of communities that, that will issue bonds on behalf, they're not, not-for-profits. Uh, and, and so I'm, I'm currently working with possibly Monticello on, on a transaction for Kirby Medical Center, which isn't too far. So there, there's a lot of examples throughout the state.
Jay.
I just wanted to clarify, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but Sean, what is your, your role?
So I, I, I am a, I'm a bond attorney with the law firm Gilmore and Bell. And so, uh, you, Clark Lindsey Village has, uh, hired my firm to service bond counsel, uh, on, on their bond financings. The odd thing is when, when, when the not-for-profit hires a bond counsel, the, the client to, uh, for the bond counsel is always the issue of the bonds, which would be the city. Uh, but we are, but issuers will always let the not-for-profit or the, the borrower, uh, select the bond counsel since they're the ones, at the end of the day, who are paying the bill and who are going to have to comply with all the, uh, tax exempt rules.
Appreciate that. I just think it's important that we're explaining who, who, who is talking to us and to, uh, the, you know, the residents of Urbana.
Good question. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
I'm going to apologize. I answered too quickly. We've actually also done this for Cunningham Children's Home. So that, that is also, it doesn't affect our financial statements or anything. It's just a, a note in there, but they're also in there.
Any other questions? Okay. Could we get a, uh, motion, a motion, please? I'll move approval of resolution number 2022 dash zero two dash zero two three R, a resolution approving certain amendments to revenue bonds issued by the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, for the benefit of Clark Lis- Lindsey Village, Inc.
I'll second. Mary Alice.
Moved by Jay, uh, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry. I thought I had it on. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Uh, last item on the agenda are appointments to boards and commissions. One of these is a new appointment and the other is, um, actually correcting the terms that you've already approved. So first of all, I wanted to, uh, submit for appointment, the, um, to the Human Relations Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2025, Mr. Gregory Schroeder. Mr. Schroeder, Schroder, pardon me, is an Urbana resident who works as an Employment First LEAP, which is Leaders in Employing All People Coordinator at Development and Services Center in Champaign. In his role at DSC, he provides networking and training for local employers who are interested in learning the benefits of disability inclusive employment in order to support job seekers with disabilities and remove barriers to employment. From 2014 to 2017, Greg served as a volunteer leader for community youth development for the US Peace Corps stationed in Mongolia. While he was there, he worked with the local health department to create an educational center for youth with intellectual and developmental disabilities who had not been permitted to attend school. In his statement and his application, he wrote, quote, "I moved to Urbana after living overseas for six years and came with the intention of being an active member of the community. My involvement in volunteering opportunities has been a great start to this. However, as a member of multiple privileged demographic groups, I want to do more to actively battle systemic racism and discrimination. Employment and housing are two sectors that have a huge impact on generational health and wellbeing. I'm happy to know that the city of Urbana has an active commission to respond to complaints and a policy to use procurement as a means of leverage towards nondiscrimination," end quote. His current community board service includes membership on the 10,000 villages Champaign Board. He's an Assistant Treasurer of NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Wellness Champaign, and a money mentor at the University of Illinois Extension. And again, that would be, uh, the Human Relations Commission in a term ending June 30th, 2025. And secondly, I, uh, would ask you to extend the terms for two of the recent appointments to the Housing Authority, Champaign County Board of Directors. Um, background on this, uh, some of you may know that the Housing Authority Board is not a City of Urbana Board or Commission, but we do, we are one of, um, three governmental bodies who appoint to that board. Cham- the city of Champaign has two seats, the city of Urbana has two seats, Champaign County has one seat, the resident advisory board has one seat to appoint, and then there's a seventh seat that alternates between Champaign and Urbana. So sometimes we'll have three appointees on the Housing Authority Board. Sometimes we'll have two. Um, you can imagine when you have this many different people appointing to one board, um, things sometimes get lost in the, in the mix. There were incomplete records that we've been dealing with from get-go. There's been turnover in directorship at the Housing Authority, turnover in leadership, of course, at the cities. And for many years, um, it was kind of murky. My assistant Kate finally took about three or four hours one day, sat down, went through everything related to this board, and we finally got all the appointments straightened out. And, and as a result of her research, and we had a call with, um, Ms. Lily Walton, who's the director of the Housing Authority, we think we're all on the same page now. And in order to get all these appointments on the correct schedule for each of the seats in the proper time, um, times of service, I'm asking to, um, ex- uh, basically extend the term of Mr. Peter McFarland, who originally was appointed through July 1st, 2024, to go through July 31st, 2026. And you just approved Todd Salin. His, originally, we were told, his, um, seat should go for one year. Actually, it needs to go from February 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2027. They're all going to be ending on July 31st from here on out because that's what the Housing Authority bylaws, um, uh, specify. So, um, appreciate your patience with this. I think we got it all figured out. So I'd appreciate a motion for both of these.
Are we doing the Human Relations Commission and the Housing Authority together in one motion?
If you could, yes.
Okay.
If you prefer to do them individually, that's okay, too.
Um, I g- I, I think we should take it individually since they're separate, if, if no one else has any objections to that. Um, I'll move for approval, um, the appointment of Gregory Schroder to the Human Relations Commission, term ending, um, June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for the Housing Authority, Champaign County Board of Directors extending terms? Sharice.
Yes. I'll move for the extension of Housing Authority, Champaign County Directors, um, of, of Peter McFarland and Todd Salin. Peter McFarland from July 1st, 2024 through twen- uh, July 31st, 2026, and Todd Salin, February 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2027.
I'll second.
Is that Mary Alice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Further discussion? Grace.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that. I think it definitely, um, makes sense. I just wondered if I could further clarify, is it, so you said extending the full terms because when we previously appointed, was it filling the remainder of someone else's previous term? Um, and now this is a full five-year or the schedule was off?
All of the above.
Okay.
I can, I, if you'd like to, uh, I don't have them in front of me, but if you'd like to see the timeline and the various seats and when, who got appointed one, we can send you that.
Okay. So a combination of those things and now we're extending it the full five years from when they were first appointed?
And five years is a long time. Typically in the city, most of our terms are three years, except for the zoning board of appeal, which is five years for some reason. So sometimes people can't serve out their, um, complete term. In the case of one of these seats, uh, we had three different people serving during that five-year period, which is, you know, you can understand why things start to get complicated when you're kind of trying to keep track of all that stuff. So, um, we've also, um, well, there's a lot that went on in this, but I think, but I'm, I'm positive it is now straightened out from our end. We've shared this information with the city of Champaign, with the Housing Authority and with the county. So and so then we, we know what we're doing. Yeah.
From now on, at least from Urbana end, and hopefully the others in the future will be appointing five-year terms from the start date for Housing Authority here on out?
On our end, yes. I can't guarantee you what will happen in the other governmental bodies. I do know that after one of these terms is over, then that third appointment reverts back to Champaign. Currently, we have three appoint, Urbana has three appointees on the Housing Authority Board. But after, um, the, uh, term, I believe there's a term ending But after, um, the, uh, term, I believe there's a term ending either next year or the year after that, that will revert back to Champaign. Okay, any other questions? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, thank you. Well, with no further business before the Urbana City Council meeting is adjourned.